Thank you, and if you're tuning into the Board of County Commissioners Appointed Directors Meeting. It is Wednesday, February ninth, 2022. It is 12:02 PM. For public attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel, or join by calling 360-252-9020, PIN 1234. I am Carolina Mahia, Chair of the Board. I am joined by Vice Chair Ty Mensah and Commissioner Gary Edwards, as well as all the appointed directors. There is, this is just an open session, so I will hand it off, and I will continue the tradition that Commissioner Mensah did last year. And since we're in the month of February, and Valentine's Day is just a couple days away, I'm going to ask if you have any plans for Valentine's Day. So I will hand it off to the first person on my screen, and that is Kurt.
Okay, thanks. It's always good to be first. First of all, on Valentine's Day, no plans for Valentine's Day because we're pushing Valentine's Day to the three-day weekend. And we're going to go down to, we're going to go down to Portland, and have some, my wife and my daughter and I, and we're also at the same time going to celebrate Chinese New Years because my daughter who's Chinese, it'll be, it's a great opportunity. We do something, try to do something special every year. So that's what we're going to do. That's the plans we have laid on right now. Hopefully, the weather cooperating and no emergencies or other issues going on. We'll have some time to do that. As far as going through public health, I think everybody's been watching. We're starting to go on to the case, the positive case rate. We're going down the downside of that. We're starting to see a drop in the numbers. Unfortunately, hospitalizations have plateaued. They're up and down a little bit, but we haven't seen a real break in the COVID hospitalizations that are taking place. But at the same time, we are moving forward. The state adjusted their case contact tracing criteria. And at the end of this month, they're changing how we do contact tracing for COVID. And we're going to start focusing in on outbreaks. And we're not going to necessarily follow up with every case that comes up positive. We're going to start focusing our resources into concentrated areas, so we can speak the best thing for our book. And so as that moves forward, I think that's pretty much everything for us as far as it, we're still focused on COVID. I know people have asked quite often, when are we going to go from pandemic to endemic? And the answer to that is it's still too soon to tell because we are still having different outbreaks. We're still having, the hospitalization rates still remain high. And so we're hoping that that happens soon, but right now it's just too early to tell.
Thank you, Kurt.
Any questions?
Any questions for Kurt? I see County Manager, go ahead.
Hey Kurt, this afternoon, the Governor has a news conference at two in the afternoon. Do you know by any chance where he's planning to unveil?
I do not. I haven't even gotten the embargoed information on that at this point. Typically, we do have embargoed information, I don't have that. I'm going to go out on a limb and say he's going to address masking because we've heard a lot about masking. We've seen four states already adjust their masking policies. So we think he may talk about masking, but that's just speculation on my part. So again, we're waiting to see what Department of Health can give us before that briefing. And I will get that out to everybody as soon as I have it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Kurt? Okay, next on my screen is Jennifer Walker.
Hello, everyone. Okay, so for Valentine's Day, my husband and I have been together for 28 or 29 years, married for 24 or 25. And long are the days, long gone are the days that we try to go out to dinner on Valentine's Day. The last time it was a disaster. And so really, we will spend time on the sofa with our dog, probably watching some romantic comedy, or action movie, or something like that. So, but we enjoy each other's company, so we'll probably be doing that. Let's see. So for Public Works, we are actively recruiting. We have vacant positions. We have a couple of positions that the Board approved through the budget process. Thank you very much. So we have all of the positions that were authorized, posted, and we are actively recruiting for those. We are also working on detailing out our work plan, so finalizing detailed work plans for all of the divisions. And we'll be coming forward to the Board at various times throughout the year, giving you state of the transport, state of the system presentations. So for transportation, for water and wastewater, for stormwater, we will be incorporating that in on an ongoing basis, so kind of big picture, and then moving down into smaller projects over the years. We're also, you know, with the legislative, legislation, legislative session, following a lot of proposed bills and assessing what those impacts will be, and trying to position ourselves and gear up for, you know, cross your fingers, additional infrastructure money that may be coming our way. So that, that's it at a high level for us, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer? Okay, Jennifer, you're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, next on my list, I see Patrick.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, fellow directors. Yeah, so Valentine's Day, my wife and I have never celebrated Valentine's Day. We've never made a too big a deal out of it, but I will say this weekend, we're excited to watch Super Bowl, and maybe that's sort of how we'll celebrate our, celebrate Valentine's Day. We're watching, hopefully. Hopefully, a good Super Bowl. I don't have a team, team in the game, so hopefully it's just a fun day where everybody can take some time away and zone out and watch some football. So for us, you know, it's been a challenging past a handful of weeks. We've been touched. We have staff that are touched by COVID. And we have about four staff right now that are out in various stages of quarantining. So despite all our best efforts to do the best we can, it's just, it's affected us. So, so we're not immune to, to the virus, obviously. And it's affected a little bit of operations, but so far, everybody seems to be safe and healthy, which ultimately, hopefully, that's where we'll, we'll be when they come out of quarantine. You know, our biggest challenge is right now, just continue to operate the law and justice system in the pandemic. We've had challenges right now. Obviously, most are aware that courts, both our District Court and Superior Court, are under current trial suspension orders. Those, Superior Courts runs through the end of this month on the 28th, so we're optimistic. That's really a priority for us because of the in-custody numbers that we have right now are primarily pending felony matters. So they're going to reassess closer to that date. And obviously, we're, I think we're all collectively, as the law and justice is hoping that we can open our courts back up to jury trials after the 28th because that really handed days the linchpin to continuing to address our criminal justice backlog. And we've gone through a period here recently of some challenges and corrections with outbreaks in, in the jail. They've done an amazing job, had a really good meeting with them on Friday. We're just continuing to try to find ways that during periods of isolation and quarantine orders from public health in the jail, that we can continue court operations and continue attorney-client communications throughout the pandemic. So hopefully, we'll have some solutions to that. And I really appreciate Corrections working with us on, on problem solving. In terms of, you know, the other pressing issues, at least for us right now, is recruitment. So we have three vacancies, which we're unfortunately experiencing some challenges in recruitment. We'll continue to actively recruit, but if any of you know any great attorneys that want to join what I think is the best public defender office in the state of Washington, please have them apply. Any members of the public that are listening to this, we do have three vacancies with our office. We have a couple other challenges, but I think that's really the high-level stuff for today. Obviously, we just finished budget, and the Board will be apprised of our remittance this year. Excuse me, last year, I think we're probably remitting north of $500,000 back to, back to the county. That's it for public defense.
Questions for Patrick? Okay, quiet today. Okay, next on my screen, I have Josh.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Hello, everyone. Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Development, Economic Development. Sorry, it might be lunchtime. So first, Habitat Conservation Plan, moving along, still looking at quarter two or so to receive the ITP, the incidental take permit from the federal government. We've been in constant contact with them, and we think that they know what we're asking and that they're going to continue moving forward on that process, so that's a good thing. The second piece of that is the codes and ordinances that we use to implement that. So when we're actually providing the permits and plans, those codes and ordinances have been presented to the Planning Commission preliminarily. We'll present them again at the next work session of the Planning Commission. The goal is to get those through the Planning Commission, and then to the Board of County Commissioners for their review, approval, and public hearing process. Public hearing process, then potential approval. And then the third piece of the HCP is the land acquisition. So we've been working to find willing sellers to provide us their land. We have been utilizing Kidder Matthews as a real estate agent. They've sent out letters to potential target areas, so we're waiting to hear back. But we are going to start kind of a more broad campaign here very quickly in terms of those that may want to develop their land, please let us know. Contact Kidder Matthews or the county. If you think you've got prairie habitat and you want to preserve it, let the county know because we're going to need as much land as possible, possible to fulfill our 30-year permit. So we're to come on that, but just wanted to give this group a heads up that that's on its way. Fair, so Commissioner Edwards may know this from attending the Fair Board meeting. The fair is set on having a fair this year. The dates are yet to be determined, but we will. We had a fair last year, if you'll recall, but it was not fully open to the public so that we could honor the youth and their forage participation. But the intent of the Fair Board currently, as it stands right now, is to have a full fair event. There's some logistical details that need to be worked out, and we'll be back in touch with more information. I wanted to just take this opportunity to make sure all the Commissioners were aware of that. And then also, the Fair Board is extremely appreciative of the approval to move forward on the $250,000 REIT in combination with the $250,000 USDA Washington Department of Agriculture grant on the groundwork for the new building at the fairgrounds. So we're working through how we're going to implement that, but the Fair Board says thank you to the Board of County Commissioners. So, thank you. Working with IT on the permit software, the tracking system, that is going, as we've heard in the ITC, going really well. Really appreciate the work of Courtney Wilson, bringing all of us together. Thank you, Dennis. It's been helpful, and I know that our community out there is going to really benefit from having that up-to-date software. And then lastly is recruiting. We've got lots of positions open and ready to be filled. We're going through the recruiting process. Good candidates out there. I know that there is a struggle about finding good candidates, but in our world, we've been doing okay. But like Patrick's PSA, for anybody out there looking for a job at a good organization within the public service realm, please contact Community Planning and Economic Development, Planners, Permit, Education, and Outreach. We're open for business. Seatbelt.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, and next on my screen, I see, oh, any questions for Josh?
I got questions for Josh.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jennifer. So with the land acquisition, has there acreage that's been secured so far kind of tentative goal for what you're wanting, what we are wanting to secure?
Yeah, so we've got the, for each different service area, we have targets set for 30 years. And what our target is for the next two years is 10% of each one of those service areas. And some of them were ahead of the game, but in most of them, we have lots of work to do, actually.
Okay, any more questions?
I think I forgot the Valentine's Day thing.
Yes, you did.
So my kids call it Valentine's Day. And so what they like to do is they make little Valentines for all of the neighbors. And so there's a lot of cutting involved. So we'll be cutting out hearts, and then a lot of gluing, hot gluing for the older one. And they love, it's a feast day also. My wife is Catholic, and so we'll be getting Left Bank Patisserie. It's one of their favorite things in all the world. So there's a plug for a local business.
That's a good one. Yes. Good plans. Okay, next on my screen, I see Dennis.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dennis Osorio, IT Director. Valentine's Day, we'll be, we'll be staying in, making something as well. Probably watching some, streaming some content of some amount, but not going out into the masses. So going into the department, really, we're focused on our main projects. ERP system is going, is plugging along. We're still finishing up design. There has been some schedule slippage, so we are looking at possibly moving the go-live date. Once that is formalized, we will, and accepted by the Steering Committee, we will be sending out communication countywide to let everyone know if and what that new date is. The website project, we've been doing a lot of prep work internally from the IT Department with the vendor, with our kickoff meeting, formal kickoff meeting for that project next week. So that project will go into full swing. Josh mentioned the new permitting system, with the plan is at the, by the end of this month to have a finalist, and then take it to the Board, go through contract negotiations, and then officially kick that project off. We are starting to look at ATMS, which is the Sheriff's Record System, to look at what we're going to do to replace that. So that's the very beginning stages of gathering requirements, developing an RFP, very beginning stages of that. And then some of my folks have been very involved in the Atrium project as well, figuring out all the requirements for everyone that's going to be moving over there from a technical perspective, getting, getting the costs associated with that and planning for that. One other thing I would like to put out to this group is, in ITC, we did talk about a network segmentation project over President's Day weekend. We are going to delay that. There was some concerns. So what we're going to do is go back to the drawing board, make sure we have good communication plan, touch base with everyone so we don't cause any outages. So, so you'll be seeing communication that will be delaying that, and once a final date is chosen, we'll communicate that back out. That's all the big ones. Everything else is just keeping everybody up and working.
Thank you, Dennis.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So just an FYI, I will, I made the announcement regarding the network segmentation and, and what that potential impact would be for a period of time. And so I think there were a couple of staff that were going to be reaching out to some of your staff. And so I, so that might be happening. I'm going to send an email as soon as we're done here to let them know that that's going to be delayed because we had some utility billing stuff and that type of thing, so that's.
I mean, that's, to me, that's the whole point. I'm getting this communication out and talking about it at the ITC, right? There's some things that we may not know. It's not like we're, we're able to schedule that. We're driving that. So if we need to push it, it's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Thank you, Dennis. And then I forgot what my other question was, Dennis, so just going to leave it at that.
Okay, Dennis, the Valentine's Day question. Can't avoid it.
Oh, I said that in the beginning. We're not, we're not doing anything. We'll be staying in and cooking something at home and taking in some more streaming content, if I could find anything else to watch.
I should probably ask the same question Commissioner Mensah, I think, asked last year. It's like, what is everyone watching? Because I'm, I'm getting load too on, on the supply. Well, thank you, Dennis. Any more questions for Dennis? No? Okay, next on my screen, I see Mary Ann.
I'm still in shock about ATMS being replaced, or even the consideration of, I think it's a 1999 system. So, um, we use it in my department as well. So, um, as far as Valentine's Day, I have a job that I'm recruiting for that closes. So I'll be home reviewing applications and for very qualified applicants and going through all of those so that I can stick with my very aggressive interview and hiring schedule, because I'm also recruiting for a couple of positions that I'm grateful for. With respect to pre-trial, I apologize for being a few moments late to this meeting. I was in a pre-trial executive network with the National Institute of Corrections. We were talking about some of the changes in the pre-trial field, some of the directions that are happening legislatively across the country, and the field responses, and some of the trainings that the National Institute of Corrections is working with the BJA to put out. So that seems to be exciting. As far as Thurston County's public safety assessment tool, we have our validation back, and it looks like multiple offices and departments within the criminal justice system are going to be working with our technical assistance providers to have some training with respect to the risk assessment tool, including my office. We are going to be with the Center for Effective Public Policy and the TA provider tomorrow to start our planning for that. It's a very exciting time for us, and I'm looking forward to that. And just moving forward, we have a huge increase in work, it looks like, with respect to the number of cases that we did screening and recommendation reports. In comparison with last January, we did double the amount of reports that we sent to just four Superior Court. And with respect to the number of cases ordered to supervision, there was a 47% increase from Superior Court, and over double the number.
Hey Dennis, you're going to have to do some repair work there.
Your volume went down.
You're coming in and out, Mary Ann.
I used my IT ticket in for my computer. So, sorry.
Okay.
I'll spare you all the rest. We're working very hard. We do a lot of good work, and we're very appreciative.
Okay, you have to answer the Valentine's Day question. You're also not off the hook, and that is if you have any special plans for Valentine's Day.
I'll be going through all of the applicants because I have a position closing on February 14th. It closes at 11:59. It's for the Resource Hub Program Manager.
It's exciting. Okay, and next on my screen, I see Maria. Maria, is your volume working?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Not all it takes, Maria. That, I'm going to, let me talk to you offline, let me figure out how that works, so. Good job. Nice strategy.
I think you were participating on a Teams meeting before this meeting on Zoom, and I think when you switch from Teams to Zoom, I think you need to do an adjustment on, on your speaker.
The Board of County Commissioners just banned Teams from county business. That'd be okay with me. Dennis doesn't like my idea.
Just so you know, I'll be coming for a budget change request if we do that because Teams is what's, what's paid for, for everyone.
My audio works better in Teams.
Mary Ann, Emory, I did contact my staff to reach out to you to try to resolve your microphone issues.
Thank you. My work ticket is in.
And also, you're going to be asking to resolve the Teams issues?
I got that one straight into Bill Gates. I'm waiting for his response on that.
Teams works well, and the first step is turn your computer off and turn it back on.
That's always number one.
That's the first line.
Do you, do you have to reboot your computer to use Teams?
No, that's just if you have any computer problem, your first question that you get asked from IT is, did you reboot? Did you restart? So, that's the first step in triage.
You're giving me a tip as to how to resolve my Teams issues.
Is that what you do when you're paving out there on county road? Do you stop and turn the equipment off and turn it back on? I'm just wondering.
Hurt, hurt.
Help, but sometimes it just comes out.
Yeah, I, Teams is not my favorite either. Okay, next on my screen, I'm sorry, Maria. Hopefully, your, your sound issues got resolved soon, the audio issues. Okay, Robin.
Good afternoon. So, starting with the Valentine's Day, my husband and I are going to celebrate 45 years of marriage in March. So we don't do a lot on Valentine's Day, much like others. We generally stay home. He makes a nice dinner. We'll watch movie, or whatever happens to be teed up on the TV, and just have a nice evening together. He calls Valentine's one of the made-up holidays, or a hallmark holiday. So, no big, no big thing at our house. On the work front, the big things going on right now in central services, the courthouse redesign project, we're about to award the project design contract, and that will be coming to the Board very soon. the, um, project design contract, and that will be coming to the board very soon. The atrium is big on our list. We're moving along on how to get everybody moved in timely to the new building. The ERP is a huge project for both central services and budget. Um, we're working on the procurement end as well as finance. And I know that's a huge lift for everyone. And Jennifer, I especially appreciate, um, your staff who are participating on the procurement end, um, because that is consuming a lot of time at, at an unexpected point in the project. Um, we'll be coming out soon with a budget calendar for the rest of this year, probably, um, early March. But we'll have a draft available in, by the end of this month for sure. One of our big priorities is staying on top of COVID, mainly the money end of COVID for my team. And, um, all of the new rules and requirements related with the feds coming out with the final rule. Um, all the changes associated with that. So if you are spending, uh, ARPA money, please be talking to the finance team for COVID rules because they did, um, change and get updated. We are rebooting the policy update team. Uh, it's been in hiatus for two years due to COVID. But we're restarting that. So you should start to see emails come through on, um, draft policies for your review. Uh, please distribute those as appropriate within your departments. And we're reconvening the review team. So information on that is going out. And then finally, a big, uh, thank you to HR for all of your support on recruitment. Um, recruitment's been a huge challenge in central services, especially for project, uh, managers, capital project managers. We can't seem to find any. So, um, if you know people who have those skills or, uh, budget manager, mad budget skills is what we're looking for there, uh, please refer them to the county website. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions for Robin? Okay, and moving on, I think I got everyone on the screen. I'll move on to the county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Related to the, uh, Valentine's Day question. Traditionally, my wife and I have not celebrated this holiday. We just exchange a card. And that was the extent of it for years. However, I was just informed two days ago that that tradition is going to change. So I'm scrambled as to what do I need to do now? Because apparently there is a, a set of expectations that I, they have changed for me. So I will be working on something in the next, uh, few days because I don't think the Super Bowl, uh, uh, party will not do. So anyways, uh, and related to the three thousand Pacific and the courthouse project, um, I'm drafting a, uh, an email, uh, to county employees. They'll give them an update, uh, related to as to where we are on the, on the, on the atrium as well as, as Robin has stated, related to the courthouse project. We are working on a, uh, developing a, a webpage that all the employees can access. They provide updates periodically on all the moves. Uh, we're going to be bringing an item, uh, to the board, hopefully on the twenty-second, for the board to authorize, consider authorizing a request for proposals or as to secure the services of, of a vendor for furniture related to the three thousand Pacific. And, uh, so the date that we have already in, uh, in mind may be affected by the, uh, supply chain issues related to the furniture. And I, I'm going to be including that on, on my email as well. So, uh, we feel optimistic. They will, uh, get to the building, uh, maybe midsummer or late summer. But, uh, still, uh, there's a lot of, uh, uh, items that we cannot control. We'll continue to work in that direction. Other than that, life is busy here at the Commissioner's Office. As you can imagine, there is a lot of moving pieces, uh, the board is considering. And I'll continue to support that effort as to the best my abilities with all of you, all of your help, obviously. So, uh, if there's anything that, that you need, or the board, uh, should consider, let me know. So we can start working on the schedule. And that's all I have.
Thank you, county manager. Any questions for Ramiro?
Can I, Jennifer?
Okay, we'll go on to commissioners. Commissioner Edwards.
Well, I'm not much for commercializing this, uh, like for Valentine's Day. I, and I guess the older you get, maybe, I don't know, maybe that happens more. Robin was kind of close to what I was probably gonna say. Uh, I don't know, we've been together, we've been married for fifty-three years. And, uh, I believe that I'll do something as extravagant as maybe get her some flowers. And, uh, probably I've learned to do some simple little things like run the vacuum. And I, I might participate in that arena a little bit. And, uh, if she wants to, uh, we'll go out and, I don't know, go to a Mexican restaurant or something like that. I don't know. Nothing, uh, whatever the bride says is what this guy does. So, uh, happy wife, happy life. And you will all learn that as time goes on. So, thank you. And thank you all for your hard work getting through this process we're all dealing with. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioner Mensah.
I wanted to ask Robin, Robin, what day is your anniversary?
Uh, we were married on March twenty-fourth.
Okay, because I had the, basically the same thing as you. Uh, my anniversary is March ninth. And it's twenty years for me. So I'm focused on that and not so much on Valentine's Day. It's weird having it on a Monday, right? You know, a lot of restaurants aren't even open. I will enjoy the Tom Brady-less Super Bowl this year, um, on Sunday. And we're gonna, we're gonna cook and kind of do more stuff than, probably than Monday. We usually include our kids, so we'll probably just figure out somewhere to get food, like, you know, do a pickup and bring home food from somewhere, uh, unusual. Ramiro, there's a chocolate shop downtown, brand new, bittersweet chocolate. You might want to try there. It's a good.
Oh, that, that's a good one. Thank you.
They're really fancy-looking chocolates. Um, I don't know what else to report. Um, Mr. Pett is keeping me pretty busy with three separate legal efforts to get me out of office. A recall, a, a criminal complaint and a, and an effort to get me invalidated for the November ballot. So Pat, on your recruiting, if any of that's successful, I'll submit my application and try to help you with your, uh, recruiting problem there. The home fund is, you know, was a big, uh, accomplishment. And there's a lot of good ideas. You know, up to forty percent of that money can go to mental health. So I'm already getting, um, contacted by different folks in the mental health. You know, what, what could we do, you know, to, um, Pat and Mary Ann were on a meeting yesterday where we talked in, talking about mental health gaps. Um, one of the things that the Triage Center is not able to accomplish is, you know, a, a little piece of funding gap because of the security that's needed and doesn't meet the criteria for the funding that's available. And that's been really the rub on creating that, having that Triage Center fulfill its original goal. So it's something for us to think about that this funding could maybe plug a gap. The interesting part is that the, the resolution routes, decision-making through the Regional Housing Council. So, and I know Commissioner he is on there. But we'll have to encourage our, our housing experts to, you know, keep their open, their minds open to mental health gaps as well. Because they'll be, they'll be sort of thinking through all the different projects. But anyway, a lot of permutations there, a lot of interesting possibilities and working on that. And trying to think what else. Water-related stuff, just a lot of stuff going on with, uh, Salmon Recovery Council and the Chehalis Basin and flooding down there, you know, and the, the process that's involved in whether or not they're going to build a dam and, um, Skookumchup, I mean, there's just a lot of, I have a lot of the, the environmentally related assignments for the board and, and, and the Chehalis Basin because that's mainly my district. So a lot of stuff going on there that's been very interesting and evolving with the, um, you know, with the recent flood events and things like that. So I guess I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Mensah? Okay, um, let's see, for me, I decided to go to California both on the Super Bowl weekend. And, um, so I will be in California for Valentine's Day. Um, and it, I'm sure it's going to be interesting with the crowds over there. Uh, we're going to go celebrate my daughter's birthday since we were, my family was quarantined during her birthday in December. So I'm very excited to, to go and, and, um, pass some time and get some time off. That'll be very nice. So that's going to be my Valentine's Day celebration. And we don't celebrate it either with my husband, besides just a card or just something very low-key. Um, updates for me, um, trying to think. Well, Commissioner Mensah has all the environmental, I, I am with all the transportation committees. So at Transportation Benefit District this morning, at, uh, seven AM this morning, I'll just throw that out there. It's a rough time to have a meeting. Um, they were talking just about the package that just got released, uh, from the state. And it's very exciting that they're going to be supporting the I-five project. Um, because I know we've been really strong advocates for that, just the impacts that would have to the whole state, really. Um, other than that, um, I, I don't really have, have much to report on. It was great to see everyone. Um, and Maria, again, I hope that your, your sound issues, audio issues get resolved. Okay, anything else someone would like to add? Dennis?
Robin reminded me, I know not everyone gets the pleasure of fully developing their budget every year, but, but we do. Um, so we get to do rates. Um, so that is going to be kicking off. And, uh, as many of you know, Brian Ferriss was the Budget Wizard in IT, who is no longer with the county. This will be the first year we're doing that. Um, a lot of your finance folks will be working with me and my team. How, let them know to have a little grace. We did a lot, a lot of knowledge transfer last year, but we'll be developing the rates the first time without, um, his thirty years of, uh, knowledge going with this.
Thank you, Dennis. And Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm, I meant to provide a little bit of, um, information regarding the Flood Debris Management Program. So basically what we've collected. So through January, we have collected five point, about five point six tons of material at the Waste and Recovery Center and forty-nine and a half cubic yards of waste at our Dropbox sites. Um, and have waived fees in the amount of just under sixteen hundred dollars for those folks that were, that were impacted.
That's great. It's just, wow, there was a lot of damage.
Yep.
Okay, anything, oh, Ramiro, go ahead.
Think about, I'm sure you reminded me of the, of the transportation package that you mentioned. Um, and there's, uh, uh, seventy-five million dollars included in that package for the, uh, Niskualee River, uh, uh, project. That's very exciting. To that extent, I convinced Commissioner, uh, Edwards to provide testimony in support of that. And that the hearing is tomorrow at eight o'clock. And there will be a combination of, from the Niskualee trial, there will be testifying David Trout in support of this as well. And, uh, and, and also Bill Adams from this Southside Community Partners Program will be also in support of this, uh, this package. So exciting times. Hopefully it comes through. I think there might be a good possibility since they are relying on a one-time transfer from the general fund to fund this particular, um, uh, uh, transportation, uh, budget. So we'll see where it goes. So, uh, reminded me to update you that.
It would be wonderful if they would allocate some of that preservation and fish passage money down to the, the counties that they have earmarked to. But I guess we can't be too choosy.
Did see the legislative budgets coming out very soon.
Yeah, that may, that may open up some opportunities for, uh, for a thousand dollars as well.
Yeah. Yeah, we're anxious to see what the state is doing with all of their ARPA money.
Okay, any more questions, comments? Okay, get fifteen to, fifteen minutes to eat lunch really quick. Thank you all for, for joining us today. Thank you. Bye.
See you, everyone.
We're adjourned.